Good evening. Oh, is this on? Yeah. Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the North Penn School District's Board of School Directors, December 12th, 2013. Before we kick off our meeting, I'd like to start with a pledge of... Are we going to do an update? Oh, even better. Why don't you rock and roll with our update.
Hello and welcome to this North Penn News Update. I'm Melissa Cubitt. The North Penn School District is proud to announce its selection to the Advanced Placement District Honor Roll List. The NPSD is one of 477 school districts from across the country and Canada to be selected for this honor. Criteria was for school districts to increase access to AP coursework while increasing percentages of students scoring three or higher on an AP exam. Congratulations to all involved on this prestigious honor. Congratulations to North Penn High School Activities Director Bill Bartle for being named a United Way superhero. Mr. Bartle was recognized for his dedication and commitment to the students of the Indian Valley area. He joins fellow United Way superhero Linda Law, who was recognized last year. The North Penn High School thespian troupe traveled to Central York High School to the annual Pennsylvania State thespian conference. Here, the students participated in workshops, performed for adjudication, and competed in many tech challenges. Kuhu Verma and Juliette Ship won the opportunity to compete in the International thespian Conference next summer. Although it was quite cold, several North Penn School District groups warmed up the parade route in the 63rd Annual Lansdale Mardi Gras Parade. Some of the groups marching the route this year were York Avenue Elementary School, the Transportation Department, the Marching Knights, and the Alumni Association, just to name a few. And finally, all North Penn High School alumni are invited to the annual North Penn High School Winter Concert on Wednesday, December 18th at 7:30 PM. Held in the high school auditorium, this night of beautiful voices and music will be a great opportunity to catch up with friends and classmates and will be sure to get you in the holiday spirit. After the concert, join the Alumni Association for light refreshments and good conversation in the auditorium lobby. And remember, if you cannot make it out to the concert, you can watch North Penn Television on Comcast 28 or Verizon 29, or log on to YouTube backslash NPTV 24 hours a day. And that is all for this edition of North Penn News. I'm Melissa Cubitt. Have a great night and a wonderful holiday season.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. This is our regularly scheduled action agenda and action meeting tonight. The first thing we're going to start off with... We don't have any recommendations. We do not. We have no proclamations for tonight, so we're going to move right into our Audience of Citizens. Those wishing to speak tonight should be aware, this is our action meeting. We will be following this meeting with our hearing for our charter school application from the Collaborative North Penn Charter School hearing, which we'll follow. And we'd like to make sure your comments are part of that record, so we'll have comment there for it, too. All right. For our action meeting tonight, anybody wishing to speak to the board, please step forward, state your name and address. Recommend... All right, thank you very much. Let's move forward with the agenda. Recommend approval of the minutes of the November 12th, 2013 work session, the minutes of the November 21st, 2013 action meeting, and the minutes of the reorganization meeting held on December 2nd, 2013 as circulated. Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. O'Donnell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Let's move forward with our committee reports tonight. Let's start with Support Services and Mr. Schilling.
Thank you, Mr. Schapinski. The Support Service Committee met on Monday, November 25th and discussed the following items. The General Nash Elementary School addition and renovation project is now closed out with the approval of a credit change of $21,000 from the general contractor, which is on tonight's agenda. All contractors have satisfied their obligations and final payment have been dispersed or will be approved for payment this evening. Also, Inglewood Elementary School additions and renovations are substantially complete. Three change orders are... were discussed and for this project and appear on tonight's agenda for board action. Regarding Oak Park, a change order to the mechanical contractor for the natural gas conversion project was discussed and moved into tonight's agenda for board action. The final design of Haffield Elementary School additions and renovation was discussed also at the last board work session. Committee and administration recommend that Plan Con Part F be approved for this project and submit it to PDE for approval. This will allow us to go out to bid for the project in January 2014. Also, a proposal for closed captioning for North Penn TV was discussed by the committee and recommended to move forward. Also, the administration reported on the status of the North Penn High School camera upgrade and the security fencing project, as well as updates on energy efficiencies and projects. Also, the administration recommended several capital projects be considered for the 2014-15 school year. The recommendations was moved to the Finance Committee. And lastly, the committee recommends approval for the change orders for North Penn High School security fencing bid order... award, rather, on tonight's agenda, and approval of Plan Con Part F for the Haffield renovation and additions project. Our next meeting for Support Service Committee will be scheduled for Monday, January 27th at 6:00 PM here at the Educational Service Center. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you, John. Any questions, Mr. Schilling, in Support Services this evening?
I have a question.
Hold on, Frank. Ms. Charnock?
I had a question regarding the $21,000 decrease. I'm not complaining about, but that was based on a punch list, so I didn't quite understand how we got money back if it was... we were reviewing the punch list.
It's just... in other words, it was a... basically a credit. I can't recall. I mean, do you remember, Frank, what there were... what's the...
No, usually...
I can't remember what...
They didn't do something.
Usually when you look at the four plans, if there's something they don't have to do, we get credit back.
Yeah, so I don't remember specifically what it was because we did discuss quite a few things that night. Yeah.
Underlayment. Yes, it's a lot of underlayment.
You're correct. It is a underlayment matter. It's Attachment 71-13.
Oh, thank you.
Change order with GC7 net credit. Credit for cementous underlayment material not installed.
Yeah. They didn't have to do it. So, we got a credit for $21,000.
Thank you.
Isn't that usually the process, though, with bill... until they open up something, open a wall up, open a floor?
Well, yeah, sometimes they don't know until they see it. And they may... and in this case, you know, in a... well, I should say, in a lot of cases, it's kind of like I remember in certain projects where they took a chalkboard down and they didn't realize there were certain things behind it. They had no idea were there. So, usually, it's the other way around. Usually, it costs us money. So, in this case, when it was a credit, I was very pleased.
Yeah, it was like, I recall, when they started digging, they realized we had to bring in a...
That's correct.
Several ton of stone. You know, they don't know until they...
Yeah, I remember that because they buried, like, somebody buried, like, old stumps and stuff that were still there, and you're not allowed to do that, so they had to fill it in. I remember that, you know.
All right, thank you.
The only comment I just want to... on the closed captions?
Yes.
Just so everyone is, as soon as we buy the equipment, the closed captions, like, when you channel... turn the channel 28 Comcast or 29 Verizon, when you turn your TV set on, it's like closed captions now. You'll see it right down the bottom of the screen. And for the board, it's always when we get the equipment, you've got to make sure you press your microphone, so... because it's only as good as the microphones can hear us. But hopefully, we'll have that soon for the people like me who are hard of hearing. So, if any of you are hard of hearing, they have these devices back there, so you can pick up everything they're saying on the microphone. Or, if you whisper, I can hear you.
Or people who like to watch their television late at night and don't, you know, want to keep somebody awake, you know? You're looking at it that way, too.
What? North Penn School?
Well, I'm telling you, I have friends of mine who watch it. Tell me how good-looking I look. I mean, I'm not going there. I mean, you know.
Any other comments for Support Services? Education, Community, and Policy, Mrs. Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. Schapinski. The ECP did not meet in the month of December. However, on the agenda this evening are student travel requests, which are events that occur annually. Our next ECP meeting will be held on Monday, January 13th at 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of ECP this evening? In the packet, you should note that on page BA4 is the list of all committee meetings and dates for meetings, so everybody can see. And we're also making sure that that's going to be published shortly, I believe. Thank you. North Penn Education Foundation, Mrs. Murphy.
Thank you. The Educational Foundation had a busy month with reviewing our mid-year grant requests, sending out our year-end appeal, and planning for our upcoming luncheon. In the beginning of December, the Grant Review Committee meant to review the submitted proposals. The Foundation received over $28,000 in grant requests and will be funding 26 grants for a total of $13,517. Thank you to all the teachers who submitted grants and the staff members who served on our grant committee. I look forward to telling you more about these grants as they are implemented throughout the school year. This week, the Foundation sent out their first e-newsletter and a year-end appeal. We hope these communications will help us better publicize the work we do and that the North Penn community will think of the Foundation when making charitable donations. The Foundation is also holding its annual staff tribute. It is the ideal way to thank an NPSD employee for his or her work with your child this holiday season while funding innovative projects here at our district. Your tax deductible gift will be recognized by the Foundation and the NPSD employee will receive a special card informing him or her of your generosity. At our monthly meeting, the trustees also discussed concentrating on a larger percentage of funding on specific focus areas for 2014-2015. Possible areas include robotics, bullying and leadership development, mentoring programs for middle school students. The trustees will continue to discuss these funding initiatives, and I look forward to updating you on these conversations. The North Penn Alumni Association will be hosting an alumni reception following the NPHS Winter Concert on Wednesday, December 18th. All alumni and families are invited to attend this festive event. Our next event will be a luncheon at Molly Maguire's in Lansdale on January... Saturday, February 22nd. When I think of 22nd, I think of George Washington. I'm not quite sure about this, but there must be some relationship. It will be our first time holding a charity luncheon at Molly's, and we are excited about this new partnership. We hope to see you all there. I also want to personally thank all of the donors who generously contribute to the Foundation in memory of Carolyn's husband, Paul Murphy. Nearly $4,000 has been raised to fund science projects, and some of those projects will be funded this spring. Any questions about the Foundation can be directed to Christine Libarowski at the ESC. Respectfully submitted, Carolyn Murphy.
Thank you. Any questions for the North Penn Education Foundation? Finance?
I got it.
I was going to say, who's got it?
I got it.
You got it. Thank you.
Finance Committee report for Thursday, December 12th. Update for the information items. The revenue expenses and balance sheet, there was very little change from the prior month. Bob Schock had reviewed all the general fund financial reports and all those percentages, and everything's okay. The salary schedule, Bob reviewed the estimating methods with the committee. The earned income tax and transfer tax report. There's hopeful news on the... on both of his reports showing a slight economic rebound. The enterprise funds on Marjorie Scott will be at a meeting in the near future to discuss the extended school care, and Pam Geller presented her Financial Recovery Plan progress report. There's items recommended for the action meeting tonight, the monthly budget transfers. And another business, Nutritional Services, reviewed the progress in implementing the Financial Recovery Plan. Frank O'Donnell questioned the staffing at Brattle Path because it's one employee higher than other schools in a similar category, and Pam explained that there's a special training program operating there. The next meeting will be on January 27th at 6:30 PM following Support Services. End of report. Thank you.
Any questions on finance tonight? Safe Schools, Mr. O'Donnell.
Safe Schools. Safe Schools Committee met on November 25th and discussed the following. Mr. Wilson detailed emergency plan updates, additional class buttons from Montgomery County Emergency Dispatch Center, evaluation of and training for emergency drills in police departments doing practice drills in our schools. Mr. Strobel continued with the demonstration of new cameras at the high school and the new security fencing project bids at the high school also. They were announced and they will be on the board... should be on the board agenda for tonight for consideration. The next meeting of Safe Schools has been scheduled for Thursday, January 30th here. Now, I'd just like to pause for a minute. Let me ask the two committee people, Carolyn and Suzanne, would you like... would you want to come on January 30th, or do you want to follow for the January meeting? Do you want to follow Support Services? Because right now, Support Services and Finance are on the same night.
Yeah, I would prefer to follow the other two meetings myself, so...
I'm sorry, you said the same night?
Yes.
I'll echo that, too.
Okay. So, I'm going to change that to the... the next Safe Schools meeting will be on January 27th following the two other committees. This way, we're all here for the same three meetings. End of report. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. And we'll make note of that so that it gets advertised properly, too.
Good point.
Personnel Committee, Mr. Kerr.
Yes, Personnel Committee met in executive session December 3rd from 5:00 to 6:00 PM to discuss matters of personnel negotiations and potential litigation. End of report.
Thank you. North Monaco Technical Career Center.
It's really easy.
Go ahead.
We haven't had our meeting yet.
No meeting.
The meeting is actually... it's Monday night following the annual holiday dinner, which I hope everyone will be coming to. The meeting is the reorganization meeting and immediately follows dinner. Everyone's welcome to attend, and I hope you do all come out and see a meeting. End of report.
Thank you, Ms. Latic. All right. Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, Mrs. Murphy.
The IU did not meet in December. However, the next meeting will be on January 22nd. Ten members of the IU staff and two board members attended the National Conference in San Antonio from December 4th through the 8th. The conference was titled Future Shock. IU speakers... I'm sorry. National speakers included Yong Zhou of University of Oregon, his book Leading the Way is a leading book for educators, and also Jamie Vollmer, Schools Can't Do It Alone. There were tens of workshops, including transportation, food service, safety. Stan Worcester from the IU presented It's Not Always About the Numbers, and Tina Veleto, How to Be an Effective Team, and Gail Kennedy's Hybrid Learning, It is Elementary. The Montgomery County IU presenters were highly lauded for their presentations. Information from the conference will filter back to the local districts over the next few months. Respectfully submitted, Carolyn Murphy.
Thank you. Any questions of the IU? The public should note that the full board met in executive session tonight, December 12th, 2013, from 6:30 to 7:30 PM to discuss matters of personnel, litigation, and negotiations. All right, let's move forward with the superintendent's report. Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. President. I recommend approval to submit Plan Con Part F documents and drawings to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for the Haffield Elementary School renovations and additions project per item 69-13.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Leonard. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of change order M3 for All States Mechanical for the Oak Park Natural Gas Conversion Project and an increased cost of $1,522.50 as listed per item 70-13.
Motion by Mr. Miniscalco, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? I just want to point out that the $1,500 investment in the national natural gas conversion is supposed to save us...
Yeah.
...tens of thousands of dollars. Called fuel cost, right?
Could be very... It's a very good investment.
Huge.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of change order GC7 for ER Steve Nierensson for the General Nash Renovations Project at a decreased cost of $21,000 as listed per item 71-13.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions?
It's a credit. Make sure... It's a credit.
Decrease clause.
Decrease.
That's on the record. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry.
Recommend approval of change order MC1 for BNS Cheap Metal Mechanical Incorporated for the Inglewood Renovations and Additions Project at a decreased cost of $21,061.75 as listed per item 72-13.
Motion by Mr. Schilling?
Second.
Second by Mr. Miniscalco. Comments or questions?
This is a decrease, right?
Decrease.
Another decrease, $21,000. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of change order FP1 for Guy M. Cooper Incorporated for the Inglewood Renovations and Additions Project at an increased cost of $1,913.61 as listed per item 72-13.
Motion by Mr. Miniscalco, second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of change order MC1 for JR Reynolds Incorporated for the Inglewood Renovations and Additions Project at a decreased cost of $23,649 as listed per item 72-13.
Motion by Mr. Schilling?
Second.
Second by Mr. Miniscalco. Comments or questions?
The decrease.
It's a decrease.
It's a good thing. It's a good thing.
PC1? Make note of the record, it's PC1.
Yeah.
And you know, it should also be noted, I give credit to John Strobel and his group. If you look at the cost of change orders on renovations to existing building for Inglewood, I mean, the GC, or I guess the mechanical, is 1.7 under.
Right.
1.24 over for the, I guess the plumber. Well, I guess it's the fire guy. And then plumber is 2.42 under. I mean, it... you know, to do renovation work on existing buildings and to come in under without, you know, extraordinary change orders is a testament to staying on top of any architect, and I give everybody credit for that.
But he does a good job.
All right, I have a second. And motion, any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the 2014 North Penn School Board Committee dates per item BA4 with one challenge, namely that the Support... excuse me, the Safe Schools Committee will meet on January 27th.
移到了
Motion by Mrs. Murphy, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? Just make sure they get advertised. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district as listed.
Motion by Mrs. Charnock, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions?
Thank you.
So noted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Recommend approval of bids per item BA5, A through C, as listed.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry.
Recommend approval of Personnel Items A, B, and C as listed.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of student travel per item BA8, A through B.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Leonard, second by Mrs. Murphy. Comments or questions? Lot of interesting places they're going. Chicago, all the way out. Be fun. That's right, carrying North Penn flag all the way out there. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of contracts per item BA9, copies of which are on file in the Office of Business Administration.
Do I have a motion?
移到了
Motion by Mr. Kerr? No, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Latic. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved.
Recommend approval of alternative placements per item BA10, copies of which are on file in the Office of the Director of Special Education.
Motion by Mr. Miniscalco, second by Mr. Kerr. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry.
This concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. Let's move forward with our finance report. Mr. Schock.
Yes, this is the Treasuries Report for the month of November 2013. Cash receipts for the month totaled $7,585,605.31. Cash dispersments for the month totaled $18,121,219.39, leaving total funds available of $150,13,940.95. The end of the report.
Thank you. Let's move forward with sanction and approval of invoices.
Recommend approval of dispersments to be sanctioned for the month of November 2013 in the amount of $18,137,969.69, and dispersments to be approved for the month of December 2013 in the amount of $1,542,294.53.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell? Second by Mr. Miniscalco. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Budget... you want to do budget transfers, then?
Recommend approval of the July 1st, 2013 through October 31st, 2013 budget transfers in the amount of $630,328.80 per item BA11, A through B.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Thank you. All right, let's move forward with federal, state grants and other programs. Dr. Holman.
Sure, thank you. I'm pleased to inform the board that the Merck Institute for Science Education has once again generously provided $6,000 to the district to fund the cost of several science teachers attending the National Science Teachers Association Conference once again this year, so we thank Merck for the opportunity that that provides for our teachers.
Yeah, thank you very much. We have a motion. Do we need to accept that gift? Mr. Solicitor?
Yes, let's get a motion on the record.
Okay, do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Kerr, second by Mr. Schilling. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
I agree. I'd just like to act on forward. If you just sort of would kind of agree now that we have a grant rather, if we could maybe some kind of report or something like that to present so we can see what was being worked on, like this grant, this grant.
Sure.
Just so we know.
Sure, and if the board is interested, this particular, this is really something that grew out of the MICE partnership. It's not a grant we actually apply for, but there is a report that we do for the, for Merck to inform them of how we use the money. So if the board is interested, we certainly can provide that information to the board as well.
I know, I'm interested. All right, thank you.
Under other business, I would like to turn the hearing over to our solicitor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I might, let's just take a brief break and allow the applicant to come in and we'll get set up for the hearing and then pick right back up.
Let's take a three-minute break while everybody comes in and gets set up for our hearing.
Thank you.
We are about to conduct a hearing in accordance with the Pennsylvania Charter School law and the application of the Collaborative North Penn Charter School, so please come in. We're going to set up over here. Yeah, that's fine. Not at all, set up. You want to shift down a little bit? Want to give them a chair? Anything to say right there? Excellent. Excellent. Are they going to need to sit?
She brought the power cord.
Okay.
Just in case.
Well, they're going to set this up so that we can actually have them on camera too, so we have a visual record besides the documented record. We're going to watch this.
Yeah, we are, Michael. After I introduce people, that'd be great.
So they closed it, but.
I don't understand what was going to happen. I just don't.
One more minute.
No, that's fine.
All right, thank you. The next item from the board is to conduct this hearing on the application of the Collaborative North Penn Charter School for approval of the application to establish a charter school in the school district. Before turning the hearing over to the applicant, I would like to explain a few things and then move some exhibits into the record. First, our process here is to allow the applicant to make a presentation. We'll ask that you identify the witnesses that will be speaking tonight and ask that they each be sworn by the court reporter. Then make the presentation. At that point, there will be questions from the administration and from the school board with regard to some of what was said. At that point, there will be opportunity for anyone in the public who would like to speak to this or to ask any questions. In that regard, I'd like to caution everyone that we do have a court reporter here. The job of a court reporter in these types of settings is oftentimes very difficult because it's natural for two people to speak at one time. That's oftentimes the way we speak to each other, but I urge you to not do that this evening, and if I interrupt or try to stop anyone, it is solely for that purpose. You have every right to speak to this application and to get up and make your point, but if I slow you down or attempt to caution you, it is solely so that we have a good record of this matter and so that the court reporter can get names clearly and get comments very clearly. So with that said, I'm now going to turn it over to the applicant and simply ask you to identify your witnesses so that they can be sworn and then go ahead with your presentation.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Wendy Ormsby. I am the founder and the co-director of the Sauterton Charter School and part of the founding team. To my left is Jennifer Arevolo. She is our director of education and principal and also part of the founding team. Kelly Martinjuk is a teacher at our school and a member of the North Penn School District. To her left is Lisa Kern, who is our board president of the Sauterton Charter School Collaborative, and to Lisa's left is Michael Brooks. He represents us.
Okay. Could I ask that you all be sworn?
Is everybody sure the testimony they gave will be truthful?
Yes.
I might get to explain your names later. Go ahead and start.
Sure. Mr. Dooley, we have some documents that we'd like to provide to you. May Jennifer bring them up?
You certainly may, and while she's doing that, let me move my own, or accept the exhibits that we have here. Exhibit number one will be the application that was submitted on November 5th by the Collaborative North Penn Charter School. Exhibit number two will be the notice of tonight's hearing, which appeared in the reporter on December 2nd, and exhibit number three would be the proof of the publication of that advertisement. So let's bring the other records up, other documents up, and I can mark them as well.
That's great. So while Jennifer's bringing them up, I'll just explain what they are. One, the first set is just a, the PowerPoint presentation, so you have that.
So I'll make that exhibit four.
Very good. The second set is, the second two, actually, the second and third set are related to the facility. The first is from the real estate representation and the third is from BSI Construction that talks to facility-related issues.
So there'll be exhibits, there'll be exhibits five and six.
Should I go ahead and begin?
Certainly.
Very good. So as one of the leaders of SCSC, the Sauterton Charter School, we wanted to discuss with you first why we feel that this is a model worthy of replication and hope to answer some questions that you might have in your mind. The first, I believe, most noteworthy point is that we were just recently nominated and were awarded as a national blue ribbon school for academic excellence and just a couple of months ago received that award down in Washington, DC. And we feel like there's a real, there could be a real benefit to the community to replicate such a model of education as SCSC. Couple of other points that we want to talk about. Jennifer Arevolo, A-R-E-V as in Victor, A-L-O. Sure. To highlight, our history is that we have been ranked in the top 5% of PA schools on PSSAs for the past five years. We've exceeded AYP standards since its inception. In 2012, we were named a Schools to Watch. That's the first charter school in Pennsylvania that's received that designation. The Department of Education promoted us as one of four charter schools worthy of replication. And just this year, we were selected by Eastern University, one of two schools, for a Pennsylvania Department of Education instructional coaching grant that is going to begin in January 2014. The collaborative, we want to discuss what we'll be offering to families in North Penn. It's the SCSC model to North Penn families that have been shut out of the process due to the lottery process and the high interest of Sauterton families. We will provide smaller learning environments with a school that will grow to K through eight. We're modeled on the idea of individualized education and instruction for students. We're much more hands-on experiential learning than text-based, so there's much more hands-on learning and less text-based instruction for our students, and an inclusive learning environment with flexible learning spaces. We wanted to highlight, just in terms of looking at our school, our eighth grade, the students have left us at SC their success in 2012, 13. You'll note that our students take reading, writing, science, and math. In addition, Algebra I was taken. This information shows that 100% of our students received at the advanced or proficient level, with the majority of our students scoring in the advanced level. The Algebra I test was the first after two years, and you can see that 100% of our students passed that test to the proficient or advanced level. So an overview of our school, if you look at this pyramid, it provides for you a visual of what the collaborative will model after the Sauterton Charter School. At the top, experiential and hands-on learning. The bottom left discusses individualized, inclusive, and flexible groupings, and perhaps flexible is the key word there, and strong parent partnerships on the right. Recognizing going into this with my own background in adult learning, at the center of this really talks about reinventing the systems inside the school so that the adults are in an ongoing way learning also, and we'll talk about each of these in a bit more detail. So we wanted to talk about where we think our success as a school lies, and so the first thing is that our students are engaged in project-based instruction. We think that children have the opportunities to go in more deeply, to learn the skills embedded in engaging curriculum. An additional part of our school is that students spend a lot of time outside of the classroom, using the outside environment, doing fieldwork that supports the learning, which we believe is really, you know, it's an international kind of approach. It's really 21st century learning. And then the other thing is that while we're engaged in formative and summative assessments, portfolio assessments is a large part in which we look at children's growth over time. Bottom left-hand side talks about individualized, inclusive, and flexible groupings, and every child at the collaborative will have an ILP as does every child at SCSC. An example of individualized instruction is that we have grade-level math groups throughout the entire school, kindergarten through eighth grade, and students flow between grades at nine o'clock, and they go to the math group that challenges them appropriately. We have some students moving up one grade, some students moving up two, and even one or two moving up more than two grades. Singapore Math is the math program that we use. It's a wonderful program, been very successful for us. Individualized reading program is the Hundred Book Challenge, which is a Philadelphia-based program, and again, it allows children to read at their individual instructional level every day through this program, and making meaning is a discrete teaching of reading comprehension skills is the reading comprehension program that we use. Children with IEPs are fully included in home bases, and home base is a key word there because we don't call them classrooms at our school, they're home bases. And the reason that they're called home bases is because our school is physically set up with more than just classrooms. It has small breakout learning areas so children can receive small, one-on-one, or small group instruction as needed, and those are children who have IEPs or don't have IEPs. All are using those various spaces throughout the building. Home base is where they spend much of their day, but not all of their day. We have multi-age configurations and grade-level looping, so first and second graders will be in the same home base, and then, as I talked about, go to the math group that makes sense for them, be involved with the individualized reading, and they might be in various small reading areas or small learning areas throughout the building. So those flexible learning spaces really extend the classroom and provide individualized instruction for every single student. And multiple teachers allow for that because we have two teachers in each classroom, and so it allows for that flow. The last part of the mission that I'm going to speak to is this idea of recognizing and valuing the parents. Our success really is in large part tied to the parents and the families that have joined us. As part of this is that parents have participated in the upkeep of our school, saving us incredible amounts of dollars. We also have monthly evening collaboration sessions. It's an opportunity for families to come. It builds community. It allows us to share what's going on. It also allows the students to, you know, talk about what they're learning. And then also, charter school law asks for, and we hope to continue this, is that parents are volunteering four hours per month. So at the center of all of this is really the idea that I believe very strongly, you cannot have a vibrant learning environment for students unless you have a vibrant learning environment for the adults. And so the center or the heart of our school is about how do we create an environment that the adults are actively engaged in making decisions about the school, their own learning, and each other's learning. And so we have bimonthly or twice a month program development sessions of a variety of topics each year, four or five topics, and those topics are determined at the beginning of each year by the faculty based on what the faculty feels is the next thing that we need to be working on or the next thing that they want to work on. Faculty has individual learning plans. The staff collaborates to write their personal learning objectives, and they select professional development trainings that might be outside of the school based on what they feel they need to develop in. It's very much a collaborative decision-making model. Programs are adopted with faculty and leadership together. We determine system changes at the school together, and we reflect back and we look forward together. So collegial and administrative parent observation and feedback, actually, every year we gather feedback that plays into professional development from colleagues, from administration, and from parents. And 360 feedback is a key to our professional development. So we wanted to highlight a little bit about the collaborative in terms of what we're going to look like in the first year, what we're going to grow to, and our first year of staffing. So in the first year, our intention is to start a kindergarten through three school and then grow to a K through eight model. The first year, there'll be six full-time certified faculty, which will include one full-time special ed teacher, five regular education teachers, creating an overall certified teacher ratio of 18 to one to students. Addition, additionally, as Wendy spoke to, is this idea of having a second teacher within the classroom, so we'll also be hiring three full-time educational support staff, which will then bring our ratio of students to teachers 12 to one with an average classroom size of 21. Additionally, at the staff, we would have a full-time CEO and principal, a part-time business manager, a part-time office support staff, part-time certified speech, occupational and physical therapist as needed and directed by IEPs, part-time certified school psychologist and school nurse, and a part-time music, art, and PE staff. In looking at facility, we want to direct you to the packet that we've provided. So the option that we're looking at is the 940-foot road in Coltsville, Pennsylvania. This is nearly a 30,000-square-foot building. You will see both a letter of support from BSI Construction. BSI, John Parsons, has walked through the building, discussed with us renovations. We've also met with the owner, and lease negotiations are ongoing at that property. That property, in terms of situating it within the district, is right next to the Christopher Dock High School. High-level overview of the first-year budget. Revenue would be about 1.35 million. Instruction of that would be comprised about $713,000. Support services, $8,000. Admin would be about $171,000. Pupil health, about $28,000. Support services in business, $10,000. Plant services, $325,000. And improvement, we've budgeted about $50,000, and those numbers obviously will unfold as facility issues firm up, with total expenses of about 1.3 million and a surplus of about That concludes- That concludes our presentation, and we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Dr. Holman?
Thank you. Good evening. I'll be asking the first set of questions and then passing over to Dr. Dietrich for the remaining questions, okay? And some of the questions, I know you, I want to thank you for your presentation, and I know some of the things I ask may go back to that, and some may touch on other portions of the application.
Sure.
Okay? So, to start, you did say, in your presentation, I believe, that you're planning to start as a K-to-three school with approximately 106 students for the 2014-15 school year, and then grow by 2018-19, which would be the fifth year of the charter, to K-to-seven with 228, correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. On page 47 of your application, you describe the founding coalition and the planning process. Which members of the founding coalition are also listed as founding coalition members for the North Penn Charter School Collaborative Application of November 2012 that is currently under appeal in Commonwealth Court?
Jennifer Revolo, Wendy Ormesby, Lisa Kern, John Penny. I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you. If the North Penn Charter School Collaborative Appeal is successful, and this application is also successful, is it the intention of the founding coalition members that are represented on both to found two schools or just one? If both application processes are successful?
I would expect one.
Okay. Thank you. On page 48, the application provides a brief response on the manner in which community groups were included in the planning process. Can you please describe any actual input from community groups in the North Penn School District that was utilized in the planning process for the proposed school?
I would say that that input is gathered on a daily basis from parents, North Penn parents who attend the Sauterton Charter School and help to shape the model of education that the Sauterton Charter School has. And certainly, North Penn parents have been, some of who are here tonight, have been a part of that for the past 14 years. And that model of education is being replicated, not, we're not starting from ground zero.
Okay. Thank you. What, if any, marketing or awareness efforts have you undertaken, no, I lost my place, to gain parent and/or community interest in the proposed school from the residents of the North Penn School District?
I would say two general mechanisms. One is an email list that we maintain, an ongoing email list, that as people call and express interest, we update that list and we send out emails. And the second would be through press releases that we do to let people know what's going on through this effort.
Okay. Thank you. On page 45, it is stated that the Collaborative North Penn Charter School anticipates the population of the school to mirror the population of the district. The application further states that it's assumed that the primary language of most students enrolling will be English. Are you aware that approximately 4% of the students in the North Penn School District qualify as ESL students?
Yes.
Yeah. Are you also aware that approximately 16% of the students in the North Penn School District do not have English as their home language?
Yes.
So, would you please explain how you will ensure that parents of these students are meaningfully included in educational decisions and opportunities affecting their children if their home language is not English?
We've had experience at our current school, so I can speak to that, which would be a similar model. The languages that we've primarily dealt with are Indian dialects, and we've also dealt with Spanish as a second language. We have been able to secure people to support us, both from the community, utilizing Head Start parents, and we also currently have a member on staff who is a Spanish-speaking person, and ESL-certified. In terms of the English as a second language for our Indian populations, we have found that our history has been is that the English and their home dialect is spoken. We would look at the need for translation services for those, if we encountered language issues in that regard. Spanish, we do have the ability to translate.
Okay. Thank you. On page 44, you refer to six key features of your school that are a shift from local educational programming. Can you explain which of those features are ones that you believe are not available in the North Penn School District? Do you need me to read through?
That would be great.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry.
What page was it?
Forty-four. You have some bullet points right in the middle of the page.
So, if you could ask your question again now that I'm there, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Sure, that's fine, absolutely. You refer to those bullet points in your application as being key features of the school that are a shift from local educational programming. Can you explain to me which of those you believe are a shift from the model that the North Penn School District uses?
All of them. The first one, an inclusive learning environment that allows for children to learn in a variety of spaces together without having any special education rooms is something that I'm not aware of that North Penn has. So, that would be quite different, the way it is at our current school and would be at the new school. The only reason that we can do that is because we have a co-teaching model, and we have two teachers in every classroom. Again, I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, that that's replicated in North Penn. I believe our student-to-teacher ratios, because of the two teachers that we're allowed to have in each classroom, the 12 to 1, approximately 12 to 1 student-teacher ratios are fairly Because of the model that we have in the classrooms, the RTI intervention model, or response to intervention instruction, is something that we're able to do ongoing with two teachers, that teachers are freed up to participate in that throughout the day when it's needed. I can tell you, the next one is the one that I'm personally most proud of, and it's the professional development groups that we have, that are teacher, and together as a faculty, they are teacher-directed. So, they are, the faculty is identifying what the school needs to do to improve. Then, participating in those, defining those programs, actively engaged in them, and problem-solving how to make the school better. So, identifying the topics for conversation that are important, and then participating in those topics to improve the school. Other than math, and Singapore Math textbooks don't drive our curriculum. We look to Common Core and state standards, and teachers are using a variety of sources to provide education, and combined with that is, I believe, a whole lot of experiential learning where the students are going out and are actively involved in fieldwork that directly supports the learning that's going on in the classroom. For example, our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders are probably going out at least once a week and maybe more on field experiences.
Okay. Thank you. Returning again briefly to the subject of ESL students. Your application on page 45 talks about providing the required instruction and access testing to students who qualify, but I don't see in your application where you mention an ESL curriculum, budget for ESL instruction, et cetera. Can you please explain to us how, if you have ESL students in the school, you'll comply with Title III and state requirements for the education of these students?
So, the model that we've worked, we think is a little unusual, but we think that's been highly effective. So, we use the home language survey to then identify, and then we do the WEDA testing as dictated by the state. And then, in terms of doing the testing, then we have our ESL teacher that works with the students. Additionally, we have utilized two different people to really build the capacity of language for our students. We use our secondary teachers to help build reading and vocabulary, and we also have used our speech teacher to build language. And so, we're looking at the idea of competency in language through three different avenues, not only an ESL teacher, but then also having multiple times during the day where they're working around literacy and language development.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving briefly to special education services, which I think you have described on page 31, and I know you addressed this a little bit in your presentation. Your application identifies a full inclusion model of delivery, sorry, delivery, with breakout, small-group instruction based on student need, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay. Can you please briefly explain to us how the school will identify students with learning differences in compliance with the state law and IDEA?
Currently, we have a certified school psychologist, that if the team at school, and I'll allow Jennifer to elaborate, but if the teaching team at school or the parent requests testing to be done, then it's done by the school psychologist, and that results in the identification.
Yeah. Okay. Can you also please describe how you will provide the full continuum of special education services required by law, regardless of the extent of student needs? And if it's possible, like, you know, not knowing your student body, can you provide an example of how the needs of a more severely challenged student would be accommodated at the school?
So, in terms of the evaluation that would happen, that would be, cover all the things. So, if speech needs to be done, looking at OT, so all those services, we would have the full battery of tests given to any student as determined by the group and also the school psychologist. And then, if we look at, we have a student that we can talk to about the idea of his inclusion within the home base. He's a student that has what would be considered more significant needs, not only in a language, but also in terms of learning. And so, his day is spread out in which he's supported in various activities. So, at nine o'clock, he's included in a small math group with a supportive service there, so that he's doing things either with the other students or doing things in tandem. But he's then part of that process, and then receiving instruction that might be supportive. Later on during the day, he might be getting further remediation, because his second hour of school looks at that he's having a one-on-one literacy and language development, and that's something that happens during his day, based on the needs that he has. Then, his day continues through different ways in which he can be included and be doing work tandem with the other students. With our second teacher in there, the child receives the services. That would be a student that's receiving, and that would have more kind of needs throughout the day, that would also require more of a one-on-one sort of attention or small group kind of constantly throughout the day.
Okay. Thank you. Moving to some questions on finances and operations. When I'm looking at your budget, can you confirm, I think I understand what you've done there, can you confirm that the calculation that's shown for special education students represents the additional cost of a special education student, not additional students? Because you have 106 marked for regular ed and then an additional number for...
Yes.
Okay. So, that is...
It's the incremental amount.
Thank you. That's what I thought.
That's correct.
Okay. On page 53, of the application, it states that there will be no initial efforts for fundraising to generate capital or supplement per pupil allocations as a part of the startup process. Your budget does provide figures for fundraising and donations from private sources. Is that revenue you intend to generate after the startup process?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. The 2014-15 budget lists a total revenue of $1,357,705, correct?
I believe that number's right.
Yeah. So, billing for July, I believe you said that your startup costs would all be paid out of the billing for July and August, correct? I believe in your application, it says the startup cost would be paid out of the July and August invoicing.
That would be our intent, yes.
Okay. So, if I take that, that's two months of billing, so if I take 1/6 of that $1,357,000 number, I get a number in the ballpark of $226,000. Can you explain to us how that revenue figure will provide sufficient funds for the startup costs when we're considering construction to the facility, lease costs, materials and equipment to be purchased, technology costs, staffing costs, and so forth, when that isn't billed until July?
I can tell you that when we started the Sauterton Charter School 14 years ago, it was the exact same circumstances, but we had 64 students, and it worked. It all worked, with only 64 students. So, some of it is you're asking the landlord to wait for a couple of months before payment. You're not paying teachers until September. We didn't have any issues back in 2000 when we opened.
Okay. Thank you. The proposed budget provided, contains line items, it looks like for eight different districts. Is that correct?
Yes. That's the template that we currently use.
Okay. So, do you intend to draw students from the remaining seven districts other than North Penn?
I think intend is not the right word. We don't have any choice with that. We will follow the law. And so, the law would be that North Penn students would get preference, I would expect, based on the interest that's been expressed from North Penn and the waiting list that we've had over the years, that we would probably draw from primarily North Penn. Of course, I can't guarantee that.
Okay. So, I'm wondering, has your group sent letters of intent to other school districts for opening a charter school or only for North Penn?
When you say letters of...
A letter of intent to notify the district that you intend to open a charter school, as under the law?
Do you understand? I'm not sure what you're saying. I'm still not understanding what your question is. Letters of intent?
Yeah. I believe under the law, you're required to send a letter of intent to any district from which you reasonably believe you will draw students. So, I'm asking whether you've sent them to anyone other than North Penn.
Okay. No, we would expect, like I said, either all or the vast majority to be from North Penn with those numbers.
Okay. Thank you. On page 46, the application refers to a history of Sauterton Charter School Collaborative working collaboratively with 10 districts. Can you please describe this collaborative relationship with the 10 districts reference?
I could talk most specifically to Sauterton, since the majority of our students, close to 80% of our students, come from Sauterton. We, I would say, on a fairly regular basis each year, are talking with the business director, the director of special education, the superintendent, on various things that come up. They have visited us, I hope have learned some things from us, and we certainly have learned some things from them, when something unique comes up to us that we haven't experienced before. They have been very supportive in talking with us and helping us to figure out what next steps might be. So, there's a variety. Am I missing anybody? Those are generally the people I think that we're talking to.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to turn over to Dr. Dietrich for the remainder of the questions.
Thank you, Dr. Holman. Thank you for your presentation. I am Dr. Curtis Dietrich, Superintendent of Schools on North Penn. Just to clarify, one of the responses you gave to Dr. Holman, you indicated when Dr. Holman asked you to look at those six key features of your school, and you asserted that they are a shift from local educational programming. When she said, which of those six features do you see as features not offered by North Penn School District, you said none of the one. In other words, North Penn didn't offer any of those that you say you offer. How did you arrive at that? How did you arrive at your understanding of North Penn?
From living here for 25 years, from speaking with parents, the many parents who have come through our school over the past 14 years. Anything else you can think of?
Thank you. The fact sheet in front of the application and your presentation tonight indicated that the address of 940-foot road in Culpsville would be the site of the proposed school, yet on page 55, the application lists three possible locations. Which will be the actual location of the school?
At this point, we hope the 40-foot, we intend and hope that the 40-foot location would be.
Have you at this time secured a lease arrangement? Have you at this time secured a lease arrangement with the owner of any of the properties?
We have not. We are in the middle of discussing that.
At this time, have you secured any necessary variances with the municipalities in which these facilities are located?
We have not. We're in the middle of discussing that.
Is it correct that the property at 940-Foot Road is zoned as light industrial?
That's correct.
On page fifty-five, the application refers to the open warehouse space at Forty-Foot Road and the Allentown Road locations as requiring, quote, "similar renovations to those made at the Sauterton Charter School Collaborative in their Broad Street location", close quote. For those of us that are unfamiliar with the Sauterton Charter School Collaborative facility as it existed prior to renovations, please describe the type of renovations to which you're referring in the application.
We moved into, there are four sections to our building. We moved into the first section, which was about six thousand square feet in two thousand, and at that point, we went in that summer and put up walls to create a few classrooms. Was fairly inexpensive, and that held us for the first year. The second year, I think I have this right, I believe it was the second year, we renovated another approximately five thousand square feet and created three more classrooms. That was an area that was very much warehouse. It was just a big open space. The fourth or third or fourth or fifth year, it wasn't the third, I don't remember exactly, but a number, a couple of years later, there was a basement space that was an open space that we went down and did the same thing. We put walls up, created two classrooms and a breakout room for classrooms down there. And then, five or six or seven years ago, we renovated what was a garage space, closed it in, and created three classrooms, an office, and some breakout rooms.
The timeline for construction in Appendix G refers to gaining verbal agreement on a lease in January, designing renovations from January through May, bidding the proposed renovations in May, completing the proposed renovations in June and July, and securing the property lease in July. Given the renovations you just described, is it realistic to complete these renovations in a two-month window?
I think it's an aggressive plan, and we would have to start with a similar model to SCSC where the entire thing is not renovated at once, but I would agree it's an aggressive model.
Thank you. Have any of the owners indicated that they would be willing to complete renovations on a verbal lease agreement only, or will you wait until you actually are under lease prior to securing that lease?
Could you ask that again?
Yeah. Have any of the owners of those proposed properties, and I think you're honing in a bit now on 940-Foot Road, are they willing to complete renovations simply with a verbal commitment or verbal lease, or would they require a written lease before any of those renovations would begin?
I'm not, I'm not. Yeah, I can't answer for them. I would assume that they would require a written lease.
Okay. Thank you. What contingency plans do you have in case renovations require a longer timeline than the one you've proposed and have acknowledged as being very aggressive?
You know, there's always the contingency plan with opening a charter school. It's the same thing. You could open mid-year, or you could open the following year.
Thank you. Please explain how you intend to address student safety, considering that at least one of these proposed locations is in a shopping center.
Could you tell me what concerns specifically? There are lots of charter schools and shopping centers, so what specific concerns do you have?
I'd like you to emphasize or explain for us your considerations of student safety. What measures do you intend to take for student safety?
I mean, I can talk about the building that we have now in terms of, that Mr. O'Donnell actually came out to, in terms of the idea of having doors that are, there's one main entrance way, that would be our intention to continue. There would be, you know, the use of cameras to be able to see who's coming in and out of the buildings. There would be limited access in terms of outside exits. In terms of the idea of safety is that children will be monitored in outdoor spaces. We would obviously be looking at trying to separate the idea of parking and the spaces where children are going to be at play. We have underneath, at our current school, the system by which notifying if there are intruders. We have experience with working with Montgomery County, who came out to actually gave us training on the idea of looking at if danger has approached post Sandy Hook. So, we have that experience that we would bring to the new building. Not sure if there are other questions that you have. That's what we currently do, and it would be a continuation of that.
I think at bus dismissal, I would only add that at bus dismissal, our children now have to walk kind of through a little alleyway, and we have monitors that are assigned that rotate through all of us in the faculty, that they monitor the children going out and make sure that they're out at the bus and the children are getting on the buses safely.
Thank you. The budget for the 2014-2015 year contains a figure of $50,000 for school building improvement. Please explain what these expenditures represent.
So, a budget is a budget, as I'm often told by people, and that's what this is. It's a budget. The $50,000 is a number that allows us to plan for renovations. It just so happens that the per-square footage, and I don't have the exact numbers, that we have budgeted are quite higher than what the forty-foot road property is asking. I believe they're asking $550 a square foot, so there's quite a bit of savings there. And so, again, the strategy would be the same strategy that we did back in two thousand, which is to start small, to create only the spaces that we need in the beginning. And with, with the per-square footage charge at the forty-foot property, there would be additional monies that could fund that.
Thank you. The budget for the 2014-2015 year in the application only allows $18,000 for technology, hardware, and software. Please explain how this technology will support the instructional program and operations in the school.
This past year, we actually moved from desktop computers to Chromebooks, one-to-one ratios in grades five through eight, and a two-to-one ratio in grades one through four. Chromebooks are really quite, we have had tremendous success with that, all the way down to grade one, and they are really quite economical, at just over $200, about $250 each. I'm not suggesting that we would have a one-to-one ratio of Chromebooks to start, but we have been really very mindful and strategic about making technology decisions. We have somebody who advises us, who has about thirty-five years' experience, and then we have a tech team internally, made up of teachers who are looking at emerging trends and are making decisions and deploying technology throughout the school with the advice of the outside consultant who helps us. Kelly Martinuk actually plays a key role on that tech team.
Does the $18,000 figure include any costs for cabling or other infrastructure alterations needed to run an integrated network?
We have gotten a tremendous amount of our technology work done, donated by this outside individual who has done a lot of pro bono work.
Thank you. Regarding staffing, please confirm that on page sixty-one, the application states that one to two teachers from the Sauterton Collaborative Charter School will move to the Collaborative North Penn Charter School, with additional teachers and auxiliary staff would be hired in spring of two thousand thirteen. Is that accurate?
That's our intention.
In the clearances section, there are clearances included for Laura Coleman, Jill Marie Mori, Ryan F. Taylor, and these individuals are not mentioned in the application. In what capacity will these individuals work for the Collaborative North Penn Charter School?
This year, we ended up hiring extra teachers to actually learn the mission of our school, and so, those stu, those teachers actually are some of the teachers that we would be shifting over.
So, their current positions are with the Sauterton group?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Please confirm that on page sixty-one, the application states that you, Jennifer, Jennifer Arvella, will serve as the principal and CEO of the Collaborative North Penn Charter School.
Yes.
What is your current position?
I currently co-direct the Sauterton Charter School on a full-time basis with Wendy Ormsby.
What, if any, capacity would you continue to hold then at the Sauterton Charter School if this North Penn Collaborative was approved?
I would be full-time at the collaborative school, and I could serve in a capacity of information sharing, just like the dialogue we have with the district.
Thank you. That concludes the questions I've prepared.
Thank you.
I thank you. Are there any questions from any board member at this time? Mr. O'Donnell?
BSI Construction, is that a, is this a construction management firm? I'm sorry, sorry. I hear you're reporting. Oh. My question, BSI Construction, is this a construction management firm?
I'm not sure what you mean by that. It's, it's what I would call a construction.
If you have a construction management firm, then they would be then hiring individual construction companies, such as their exhibits are in here. So, they, you tell them you want, you want renovations done of X amount of dollars. They will then get the plans drawn up for you, and they're going to charge you a fee for that. They also manage the actual construction of the renovation project. Have you talked over with BSI what they would do for you? What would they, what would BSI do for you? What would this company do for you?
BSI John Parsons is the CEO of a construction management company, and potentially, they could be the people that renovate our space.
Okay. So, this is the construction management firm?
Yes. Our architect, we've, we actually have an architect who's local, who would be drawing up the plans for us.
Okay. So, the BSI would get the architectural plans, and then BSI would go out and get the individual construction companies to do your renovations.
That's the part that I can't answer because I don't, I don't know enough about how BSI runs their organization to know what they have internally. I understand what you're talking about hiring, but I don't, I don't feel, I can answer that accurately. I don't know how they, they would go about doing that.
I used to be the CFO of a construction management firm. That's how they do it. You hire this company, you can get, either they can get the design plans, or you have the plans, and then they will hire individual companies, because these people seem to be too small to have completed a $460 million Pennsylvania Construction Center expansion. So, it's a management firm. You, just out of curiosity, you don't know the management fee? Just curious.
I don't.
Okay. Next question. This is a question on hearing impaired, excuse me, hard of hearing. They don't like using the frame, terminology, hearing impaired. Do you have any students that are hard of hearing?
Not currently.
Any teachers that are hard of hearing?
No.
Okay. If you have any, have you ever heard of looping? Looping for people who are hard of hearing?
I have not.
Okay. Looping is something where the, it's, the room would be wired around, and people with hearing aids like mine, I press one button, and somebody back there, I can hear them whisper, it goes in, and it transmitted here. My only suggestion, I would like to hear that you would say, yes, you would make a commitment to a student or an employee, you would commit to providing looping. I'm putting you on the spot, but I'm an advocate for the hard of, for the hard of hearing. I'd like to hear you say, yes, you would like to, you would do looping for those people who can't hear.
I could not say that we're going to commit to looping, however, our staff, we support them in the needs that they have, and so, we would certainly talk with them, but asking for confirmation to use this technology, we would research and see what would be the best way in which we could make this person feel like they can, you know, either do their work, or certainly if it was a student, do their work as a student. But I don't feel like I can commit to looping since I'm hearing this the first time. I can't say that the school would commit to that.
Okay. Just a comment. You might want to look into it. It's new technology, about two, three years old.
Thank you.
And we have a lot of hearing-assisted rooms in North Penn for people like me.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have one I want to ask. Wendy, I think it was you that said this, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but you were talking about some of the experiences, and you have experiential learning. You said that some of your students go to two to three field experiences each week.
I said, our older, our, our older students go, it's not unusual for them to do one time a week and sometimes more.
Could you, could you give me a brief description of like, what are these experiences?
Sure. In sixth grade, they have a place they go to called Special Spots, and they go, Julie?
No.
Once a month. So, once a month, they go there, and they are writing, reflecting, doing a lot of language arts-type work. There, I mean, there's so many.
I can talk about seasons in particular, just because it's on the top of my memory right now. They do various studies around the seasonal changes. So, they've done migratory study changes, so they've gone to Hawk Mountain, they've gone to different raptor sites to look at things. They were just out this week, actually going out to Special Spots, and then also looking at the idea of hibernation. So, they're out and about in various places. They've done a Cape May overnight trip when they're studying the butterfly migrations of monarchs, and then they're doing other follow-up studies in terms of that. And I would say that the one time of week is really when the weather is most conducive to that. However, with Special Spots, that's a local, a local park, and so, Wendy said, once a month, but they actually are going out once, once a week to Special Spots during certain periods of time.
Thank you. I wanted to acknowledge the additional work you put into addressing some of our earlier concerns from the first time we had it. I just wanted to acknowledge that I did read through your application. I took extensive notes tonight, and I appreciate the efforts you put forth trying to answer some of the earlier concerns that we raised. Thank you. I wanted to say that. Thank you.
I'm, I'm just recollecting, too, that in the application, because I'm looking back at one of our middle school teachers who's in the back, there actually is a part with the curriculum where it talks about the various, some of the highlights of the field work that are going on, is kind of just listed, the, so.
Actually, that was one of the reasons why I asked, because I wanted to see if you could elaborate on that, because I know what it takes to take students out and to travel, and that's, it takes people out of your building, it takes resources, time, sometimes it takes away from education, but if it's an educational purpose, hopefully, they're balancing that. That's the reason why I asked the question. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board at this time?
I had a question as well.
Yes.
Thank you. It's also related to the field work, which seems to be quite extensive as part of the learning process, so my question is, how is the field work accounted for in the budget?
There's various ways. I would say our seventh and eighth, okay, so, there are standard fundraising activities that have become part of our culture. And so, the seventh and eighth grade group, eleven thousand. This year is going to be about $11,000 to send them to New York. They go to New York one year and DC the next year, and then all of the other trips that they're doing. So, things like basket bingo, usually generates three or $4,000. They do car washes, they do cookie dough sales. So, they have four or five, for us, fairly significant fundraisers that they do that usually generate eight or nine, $10,000, and that defers an awful lot of the cost from the parents. You're welcome.
I have one question, pretty quick. Lineworth Penn?
Over the years, with the Sauterton Charter School, we hold a monthly open houses, and from that information, typically every time when we get around to the idea of, how do I get in? It's through a lottery process. Who gets in? We talk about the three-tiered process. Sauterton, siblings first, then anyone who's residing in the district, and then all outside districts. For the past four or five years, we have not brought in any new families from districts outside of Sauterton. Our model is a small model. We intend to keep a small model at the idea of a second school. And because of that, literally every time when we get around to the idea of, for families who are outside of the district, they will say, you know, what are our chances? And will say the chances are very small. And so, what we have done on our, you'll actually see it in the document, we actually, the last year when we last year when we had the cards of enrollment saying they wanted to be enrolled in the lottery, we asked parents if they would be interested in a replication school because we wanted to survey the level of interest from North Penn. Parents from Pen Ridge, from Quakertown, all the parents who come in. And for the past three years, the majority of families have come from North Penn, I think because your district is also large. And so that's been the predominant of our waiting list for outside districts.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions from the board at this time? Do you have anything else to add right, right now?
No.
All right, thank you.
I don't think so, no.
We appreciate your time. We know it's a, a long day for you. So thank you for providing us the opportunity to present the collaborative.
Sure. We're not, we're not done quite yet.
Oh, sorry.
Tom, do you need a break? Are you all right? Well, I don't know yet. We're making no promises here, Tom. You all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then at, at this point, I'm going to open it up to the, to the public. I would ask that anyone who wishes to speak, come forward, go to the microphone, please state your name and spell your last name and then provide your address as well and then make your, make your comments. Yes? No?
Thank you. Hello, members of the board. My name is Ekaterina Hartman, spelled E-K-A-T-E-R-I-N-A-H-A-R-T-M-A-N. I live on 129 Richardson Road in Lansdale. My husband and I fully support the opening of North Penn Charter Collaborative School and I want to speak up to tell you why. We attended this meeting last year in full support of the school's approval. After visiting its sister school in Sauterston, we were extremely excited to learn that charter schools were such a great alternative to typical private and public schools. Our son was attending a private kindergarten at the time and we were really hoping that the charter school would be approved so that he could begin his education at a school we felt was far above the rest. However, we saddened to learn that the school was not approved and worse, we found out that one of the reasons was, was that there was not enough support from the community, which we feel is, could not be further from the truth. To this day, I regret not speaking out at that meeting last year. And even though I did not, many parents did. So we did not understand how lack of support could be a valid reason. We've also since learned that one of the only two individuals speaking out against the school was actively running for the school board, causing us to really question his political agenda. I personally voted for some of you to be elected this year and I know not a lot of people showed up to those elections because it is my responsibility as a citizen and a parent to have a say in who runs our school district. And so I stand here before you to tell you that there's definitely a need for this school to be open in our school district. Because this school was denied last year, our son started first grade at Bridle Path Elementary, which we're quickly learning is a very good school. They have a caring principal, absolutely amazing teachers and unbelievably involved parents. The staff and teachers do absolutely everything in their power to make all of their students' experiences the very best and I am sure that my son will do okay there. But why should we stop at okay? We want him and all the other students who apply to this school to reach their full potential and then some to learn advanced subjects if they're able to do so and participate in an individualized learning that the school offers. We want teachers to be able to give individualized attention and support, something that is just not possible with 22 students in the room. And we've learned that firsthand with our son this year. We want our teachers to have the freedom to adjust the curriculum based on what they think is best and not forced to follow some rigid and in many cases outdated curriculum that they were not involved in selecting. We believe that North Penn Collaborative would give this to our child in particular and many others. And yes, private schools do offer these things as well, but many parents either cannot afford to send their children there or do not agree with religious affiliations of these schools. As active community participants and voters, we are here to tell you that yes, there's definitely a need for this charter school in our district and we would love our son to attend there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Mike McLaughlin. Last name is spelled M-C-L-A-U-G-H-L-I-N. I live at 224 Chestnut Street, Hatfield, member of the Upper Gwinnett Fire Department. I have two daughters, age 15 and 16, both of whom have recently graduated from Sauterston Charter School Collaborative. They could not have been more satisfied with their experience there. SCSC has truly been a godsend to our family. It was a minor miracle that our children were even admitted to the school as we do not live in Sauterston. I urge you to enthusiastically support this application for the collaborative North Penn Charter School. Thank you for your time.
My name is Adella Azaredo, A-Z-E-R-E-D-O. E-D-O. Adele. A-D-E-L-E. I live at 18 North Maple Avenue. I am a veteran. I've served in Iraq twice. I moved to North Penn School District in February. Since I moved here in February, I've noticed one thing lacking, the push to drive our kids to want better. My daughter comes home from school with her homework and she doesn't want to do it because the teachers go over with them the next day. They're bored. My daughter is reading at a second or third grade level. She is amazing. I have one daughter who's about to start school. She has speech issues and some hearing issues. I want my kids to be able to have a chance to excel and I believe that the charter school will offer them that. At North Penn, they don't have that opportunity. The teachers hold the kids back. They don't push them to excel. They do the bare minimum. And I believe with every ounce of my being that if they're given the chance, they can do this. Any kid who is given the chance, the drive to want to do better, they can do it. And I believe the charter school will give that to every child that attends. And I ask each of you to actually completely consider what you would take away from every child if you, if you say, no, we're not going to do this charter school. I understand that some of you might be scared. It's different. Who knows what will, what it will bring, but in Sauterston, it has made a difference in so many people, in so many children's lives. So please consider it for my children. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jessica McLaughlin. My husband just came up before me. That's M-C-L-A-U-G-H-L-I-N.
Same way.
Yes, same way. And I also live at 224 Chestnut Street in Hatfield. As my husband addressed, our daughters recently graduated from the Sauterston Charter School and I just wanted to touch base and say that they have, from that, they have a lifelong love of learning. Being accepted into their new school, the principal referenced that any student who has come from SCSC is known for their academic excellence. And my kids are now in honors classes and they find them, I wouldn't say challenging, it's just more of the same. Honors classes for them are, are on par with what they've experienced at SCSC. I also just want to say that, you know, opening a store, the school in North Penn School District, it just creates more options. Obviously, North Penn School District will always be here as well as the private schools that are here already. It just creates another option for parents who would like that for their children. So I just request that you would consider that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Catherine Connolly, spelled C-O-N-N-E-L-L-Y. I live at 1568 Morgan Way in Talmes Township. K-A-T-H-R-Y-N. I've been a resident of the North Penn Schools District for approximately 30 of my 37 years. I went through North Penn Schools K through 12, graduated. And I'm also a parent of four children, two which have completed the Sauterston Charter School Collaborative and two which are still in the elementary level of the school for the past 14 years. I'm here to talk about the benefits of the charter school in our community and personally how the charter school has impacted my own children. Our journey with this charter school began far before they opened their doors. My oldest child was scheduled to be registered for kindergarten 14 years ago and I had just completed a college project while I was completing my RN for school. And based on Hillary Rodham Clinton's book, It Takes a Village to Raise a Child. And one of the things that was discussed in the book was community and how communities come together to raise children. And I really liked the process of communities in schools and it led me to focus research on charter schools. And I was so excited to learn the month that she was supposed to register for kindergarten that Sauterston Charter School was going to open. She was first on the waiting list and she got in and I have not regretted it since. I really like the concept of the community and I, I like the concept of the individualized education. And I can testify to my own children how that's impacted us. We were unsure if the charter school was going to be a good fit for our, our younger son at the time because he is a very structured child and needed a lot of structure in his education. So we weren't sure how it was going to work. But we tried it for our oldest and we really liked it and we put our second son in it. And now I have two children, one child who has, is in college and completing honors programs in college. She took five AP courses in the North Penn High School. And another son who was identified in the second grade as excelling in math and he was doing college level math in the 10th grade because of the charter school. He was identified very early as excelling in math. And the flexible learning environment met his needs. My oldest child was challenged at the charter school. It was there where she realized her dream to become a writer. And now she's in college learning to become a writer. She learned that by doing an individualized learning project in the eighth grade, which is a year-long project called an eye search project. And she focused on writing and she actually wrote a novel for that project and now she's studying to become a writer. Very proud. I also have two younger children who struggle a little bit more with school. I have a middle son who had an IEP for grades one through, one through three for speech and language. But as was discussed in the presentation, he was included in all home-based activities. He never felt left out. It was all included within his learning and when he needed one-on-one intention, attention, it was there for him. He's now doing very well in the fifth grade. I have a younger daughter who was just identified as struggling a little bit, needing some reading support. So we have her in reading support. I have bi-weekly conferences with her teacher over the phone. So I feel like there's a lot of communication between the teachers and the parents at the school. I'm, problems are identified very early, whether they be a problem with the, with the child in class or having difficulties, or even my older son's giftedness in math was identified very, very early. And I believe that the small class size, the increased teacher-to-student ratio, where there's more teachers to students allows for that special attention that my children received. I also feel it's a good asset to have the charter school in the community. The charter school has taught my children community service through programs like the Table of Plenty to help feed the hungry and other community programs. The charter school itself helps build community through parent-teacher connections, including the accessibilities of teachers and the connections with other parents because parents are included through the open door policy. And we're allowed to come into the classrooms and see what's going on and there's a lot of volunteerism. So we connect very closely with the other parents in the school, which is really nice, I think. It's a very community-based school. In conclusion, I believe it's every parent's right to have school choice. North Penn may not be the right fit for some kids, but it might be the right fit for some kids. Not every child fits into that mold and it's time to allow the parent to choose what school community they would like to join and what's right for their children. And I feel that the Sauterston Charter School is like a second family to me. When my oldest daughter graduated, we were all in tears because she went, she was the first class that went K through eighth in the school and we were so sad to, it just felt like a loss. But I do feel like they're a second family and it's very community-based and I feel like the education is very individualized for my gifted children and for my children who struggle a little bit more. So that's it.
Good evening. My name is Anna, last name Lee, L-I. Pretty simple. My address is 102 Bartlett Drive, Bartlett. It's in North Wales. I just learned about the Sauterston School from my cousin probably several months ago and I actually feel bad that I haven't heard about it before. It's, everything that was mentioned here is, is amazing. I mean, I started researching schools just last year because my twin boys just turned five and they're about to go to the kindergarten next year. So my question would be, why not? I mean, there is nothing that the director said would probably have a negative impact on any child, any child. So I, I would definitely support that kind of school. I have three boys and I, I would love for my boys to actually be able to join the school. They come in 2014 year and hopefully my younger one will join them later, four years down the road. And I mean, I come from a totally different country with totally different education and I truly believe that we have to follow the, the progress in the development in the education. We shouldn't just stop at using the old books or the old system. We should progress with that. And I truly believe that the charter school system supports that kind of progress. So that would be it. Thank you.
My name is William Slack, S as in Susan, L-A-C-K. I live at 209 North Line Street here in Lansdale. I have two sons. One is 16, he has moderate autism. One is six, he has ADHD. They're both amazing kids. I love them both very much and I want the very best things for them. I think that the traditional educational model is a great thing for a lot of kids. And I went through a traditional educational model. I had both private and public school experience growing up and had no difficulty whatsoever in my education, really enjoyed my education. I look at my kids and their needs and I think that both of them need something different. I know that the North Penn School District is doing their very best to accommodate the needs of the kids that have different needs. I know that a maximum amount of effort is being put forth. I know that everyone is doing their very best. Sometimes it's more difficult in a traditional school to be as agile and be as flexible as the charter school could. And that's why I advocate for the charter school. I believe that they have the ability because of the, the attention to detail that comes with every child's educational path. I just, I think that maximum opportunities are afforded those who might struggle in a traditional educational model. Because education is so individualized, because deficits can be caught early, because areas of gifting can be caught and encouraged and cultivated in ways that maybe a traditional model can. I know that a lot of the things that I'm saying are things that have been said already. I just want to add my voice to the conversation. I think it's a great idea. Just a couple notes.
All right, you all right? Okay, back, back on the record. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. First name is Kimberly. The last name is Buchanan, B-U-C-H-A-N-A-N. Live at 657 North Field Lane, Harleysville. I am here to support the charter school. I was a product of the North Penn School District. I grew up. I went K through 12. My husband and I, we moved to the Sauterston School District purely for location and opportunity. The Sauterston Charter School fell into our lap. I have two boys that graduated from the school, one that's almost 17 and one that just turned 15. It was very, I really listened to a lot of the questions that you guys asked, and I said to myself, "What would I want as a parent considering the charter school?" You asked about the individual learning plans. I'm going to tell you a story about my one son, who's the oldest one. He had an individual learning plan every year. We sat down as a team, as a parent, the child, and the teachers. The number one thing was his writing. He always needed to work on his writing. And Julie will sit there and giggle in the back of the room, because I attribute her hard work and all the teachers to his success today. Every year, we said, "We want to improve his writing." The success is, at eighth grade, when he took his PSSAs, he got 100, a perfect score in writing. I feel a lot of it has to do with the structure and the individual learning plan. It's not just me saying, "I want to improve in his writing." It was him saying, "I want to do better." That's a spirit. That's not always in a public environment. I grew up in the North Penn School District. I graduated 10th in my class at North Penn High School, okay? I had to work my butt off, but it was by my choice. I can't say my teachers were always encouraging, but I can say that at the charter school. In that individual learning plan, we set goals, we do ongoing measurements. Every marking period, we'd say, "Okay, where are we at? Where are we at? Let's continue to that dialogue." I heard one of the parents say, "The open and continuous communication, that was critical." One of the other questions I heard was, "How are you partnering with the other schools?" I know Jennifer and Wendy talk a lot about the organizational structure. What about this policy? What about that safety rule? You know, but as a parent, I have two athletically talented boys. I partnered, and they enabled me to partner with the Sauterston School District to allow them to play soccer at the varsity level, allowed them to play wrestling at the varsity level. Now, this is sixth, seventh, and eighth grade for both my boys, and additionally, even play lacrosse and consider baseball. So the school partners with, in this case, North Penn, to allow them not just only to excel academically, but athletically. That's an important part of a child's education. Okay? One of the other things I saw in Wendy's presentation is the adult learning model. She spent a lot of time talking about the teachers developing, but I wanted to share from my perspective as a parent, I learned a lot. One of my most favorite, and I will say even today, we have evening collaboratives every month. One of my most favorite one is the yardstick model. It's reviewed every October. It is something where the parents can go in and learn, there's a book called The Yardstick, and I can't remember the author, but it talks about your, the child's social, environmental, and physical development in each of the grades. So as a fourth grader, I got in to say, "Well, here's a little handout. Is my son normal?" It's a question, but as a parent, that was really important for me. Every month, there was a different learning model. I'm sorry, I never saw that in North Penn. You barely got back to school nights. Only half the parents would attend. This is hugely encouraged by the charter school. It will be replicated in the North Penn School District. And as a parent, both my boys went through the school, a little bit about where they are today. They both attend a private high school, LaSalle College High School. They are excelling. How does charter school prepare them for that? It did phenomenal. My older son's taking five AP classes right now and getting straight A's. Even in advanced placement English, Ms. Julie, with the writing, I have a freshman at the high school level who's also excelling. I attribute this to the opportunity of choice. Could I have sent them to Sauterston? Absolutely. Would I have gotten the same results? Nah. I don't believe it. I'm going to challenge all of you. I heard one of the ladies say, "Why not?" And I know there's going to be reasons why not, but I will also challenge you, choice. What is wrong with choice? In conclusion, I highly support it. Both my boys went through it. They're succeeding, and I can't really top anything else that's been said, except the personal perspective from mine. So I would encourage you to think long and hard about this. It's definitely worth the choice. Thank you.
Okay, is there, is there anyone else? All right. Thank you all very much for your cooperation in getting through that. That will then conclude the hearing this evening. Let me just explain a little bit about the procedure. The school board now must render a decision. Under the law, the decision cannot be issued prior to January 26th of 2014, and must be rendered before February 25th, 25th, I'm sorry, 2014. At this point, I would expect that that decision would be rendered at the February 20th action meeting of this board. Thank you very much.